Okay, Erika, are we ready?
Yes, sir.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. I'm Dan O'Leary, Board Chair, and I would like to acknowledge the fact that we are here in Benton County on the lands of the Calaquio peoples and Osce peoples as well. Both of those native peoples are still with us, so their descendants live and are affiliated with the Confederated Tribes that select some Confederated Tribes from the Grand Ron. And we strive to emulate their values in terms of thinking for the long term and valuing connections and community. So with that, I would like to have my fellow commissioners and staff introduce themselves.
Good morning, Nancy Wyde, Commissioner and Vice Chair. Sorry, Pat.
Um, Commissioner. Good morning, Joe Kirby, Benton County Administrator.
Vance Cronin, County Council.
Abby Parsons, Finance.
Alyssa Rash, Public Information Officer.
Erica Miles.
Erica Miles.
Jeff Van Arden, North Bend County Sheriff.
Suzanne Hoffman, Health Department Director.
April Holland, Public Health Administrator.
I'm the Emergency Manager.
Okay, I think that's it for staff, other than Greg Riddler, undersheriff, who just joined us. So with that, are there any announcements this morning? No? Okay. Well, it is now time for comments from the public. And so is there anyone that wishes to speak this morning?
Yes.
Okay. We'll be limiting comments to three minutes. Please identify yourself with your name and town where you live.
Okay, can I speak?
Please do. Could you please identify yourself?
Yeah, yeah. My name is Joel Dyer. I live in Benton County, northern part of the county near Deere Village. And I'd like to thank the Commissioners for this chance to comment. I'm very concerned about plans by Republic Services Corporation to expand the landfill dramatically, the Coffinview landfill. And today, as part of your agenda, I noticed that you're being asked to consider their annual report for 2020. I hope you'll give special attention to a plot prepared by Mr. Daniel Reddick. I believe it's on page 299 of your Commissioners' packet, which shows landfill tonnage by county. And the key takeaway is that over the past five years, Benton County is actually doing a good job. We're flatlining on our waste. So you can give yourselves a pat on the back for helping to reduce waste coming from our county. But then look at Washington County, at Marion County, and at Lynn County. Tonnage from those counties keeps increasing. Over the last four years, Washington County has shipped 900,000 tons, and Marion County is running right behind it. Those are the reasons, that huge pile of waste coming from out of county is why, and even out of the region, is why Republic wants to expand this dump. Your predecessors on this commission turned down the exact same application in 1994, and you should reject it again. Thank you for taking my comment.
Thank you. Much appreciated. And moving on, are there others that wish to comment?
Hi, my name is Nancy Whitcomb. I live in the unincorporated area of Benton County. I've written a detailed email that is going to go into the points that I'd like to make here in greater detail, and I will refer you to that, as well as to a photo that I attached to that email. I also am speaking about the Coffinview Annual Report, and I would like to respectfully suggest that the issue of future landfill be addressed in detail by a comprehensive plan amendment for the first step in the next COF plan, or in some equivalent way that will invite participation of stakeholders and provide that future, that the future direction of the landfill fill is carefully studied in the detail that it warrants. There are no clear guidelines in the COF plan for future landfill decisions. At the time of the 2000 COF plan, the estimated life of the landfill was 43 years. Since 2007, the usage of the landfill has increased dramatically. 2020 had 150% of the tonnage disposed of, as they did in 2007, and now the landfill operators are saying they are again at capacity. It is a disservice to the people who have to make decisions, have to make them, in the absence of any clear guidelines about what the future of the landfill wants to be in this area. I can tell you that neighbors in the area are unhappy with current usage and certainly would oppose increases in usage in the future. I think that a COF plan amendment addressing the future of the landfill should look at the history of the landfill use permits and a kind of a mission creep in the landfill, which has resulted in only ever increasing amounts of garbage disposed of in our county and increasingly from other counties. I'd like, it addressed what is the, we know that we get revenues from the landfill, but what are the costs of those revenues? In property values, in road maintenance, in accidents on our highways, and so on. I think that's an important consideration. Are the forest zones surrounding the landfill supposed to buffer the landfill? If so, it would be great to have guidelines on how exactly that is to be buffered. I have attached a photograph to my email, which shows an extremely unbuffered quarry in landfill. Should there be more stringent requirements for conditional use permits for landfill expansions or significant changes in the use of the landfill in the future? I think that the neighbors all think that there should be. And finally, well, second, and ultimately, do we, this is not just a landfill, it's also a quarry. The landfill operations never address the quarry operations and vice versa. Together, this is a huge industrial usage in an area that is primarily residential and agricultural. It is extremely, it's a huge thumbprint on the rest of the residents of the area. And finally, what is the vision for the landfill in the future in Benton County? That really needs to be considered and addressed. The neighbors would be happy to support the Commissioners with whatever citizen participation would be useful in addressing these issues, and thank you so very much for your work.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. And are there any others that would like to speak at this time?
Chair Ogierok, can I just make one quick comment? If anybody else is interested in speaking on the landfill, I would ask that you keep your comments related to the annual report that's being considered by the Board. As I'm sure you all know, there is a land use application pending, and the opportunity to provide public comment and testimony will be available both through the Planning Commission and if there's an appeal to the Board of Commissioners. I'm throwing that caution out because we would hate to have to set up an expartee situation where the Board has to declare expartee contact. So just please be cognizant that the opportunity to provide testimony on the land use applications flows through the Planning Commission first.
Attorney Cronin, how would we go about formally requesting an amendment to the COF plan to address the future of the landfill?
The comprehensive plan, uh, now, I'm sure you probably know that's probably the most difficult of all the land use actions that Benton County can take. So I would strongly recommend that if that is an action you would like to pursue, that you talk with our Community Development Director, Greg Marret. I know that an application is possible. I also know that the county can initiate COF plan amendments. Also, you know, but you can also speak with Republic Services, and since the property is owned by Republic, as a property owner, it could initiate a COF into plan change. So there are three options.
I read that citizens can initiate a comprehensive plan amendment.
And that's why I suggested chat with our Community Development Director. I'm not intimately familiar with the steps of the process.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarification, Vance. Is there anyone else who would wish to speak to the narrower topic of the Republic Services annual report item on our agenda? Or any other topic? Well, thank you. We will then move on to review and approve the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda at this time? Hearing that, we will consider the agenda accepted and move on into our work session. And the first item of business is an update from our Department Operations Center with April Holland and Suzanne Hoffman.
Good morning, everyone. I'll just turn it over to April for an update for today.
Good morning, everyone. As usual, there's no shortage of COVID in the news, and today is no different. Wanted to just give you an update on everything we're seeing here at the DOC. Our cases have seen a slight decrease after eight weeks of a continuous uphill climb. Last week, there were 154 confirmed presumptive cases among residents, and the week before, they were 170. This is just about a 9% decrease from the previous week. The case rates do remain very, very high. However, the seven-day case rate is at 163 per 100,000. If you remember anything above 100 is high community transmission, and that's just down from 180 per 100,000. If we're still in the mindset of the old 14-day risk and protection framework, that case rate is 342 per 100,000, so still well above what we used to consider extreme risk. While we did see a slight decrease in cases, it's likely that numbers will increase as a result of either the Liberty Weekend, we've often seen bumps after holidays, and a school's return session. Our positivity rate is, it remains higher than we would like it at 7.1%, but again, remains much lower than the current statewide rate of over 12%. These really high positivity figures indicate widespread and out-of-control transmission across the state. Looking at the details of our cases, not much has changed since I last updated you. Children under 12 comprise about 10% of the cases, and they're about 10% of the population, so they're not overrepresented. And it's the adults 18 to 29 that are slightly overrepresented in cases, as they're about 35% of reported cases and about 30% of the population. And just to repeat, you know, this makes sense because they're out and about in the community, they're out working, and we have a lower vaccination rate in these age groups than we do with older adults who are slightly underrepresented. So ages 70 and up were 4.3% of cases, and they are 11% of our population. So higher vaccination rates are going to mean lower cases. Our CD team is working as hard as ever to respond to the surge in cases. They continue to prioritize cases. They focus on older, younger, and people in prioritized settings. There are many, many outbreaks right now in those prioritized settings, and they are doing an amazing job despite the great challenges they're facing. Looking at hospitalizations, the number of people hospitalized with COVID statewide has remained very high, but the increases thankfully have slowed or stalled. If you remember on the graph of statewide hospitalizations, you'd see the Y-axis, the line shoots straight up, and now instead of continuing straight up, it's got a little bit of a wiggle at the top. So that's really nice to see. However, as I said, numbers are still really high. 1,172 hospitalized, as does the latest data that I have from the 3rd of September, and over 300 in ICU, and 187 on ventilators. Our hospital capacity in the region, there were 10 out of 98 ICU beds available in Region 2. That number fluctuates, and it's certainly been worse, and it's certainly been better. The demand on the hospital systems remain very high, but the last few days, what we've seen has been a bit of a glimmer of hope for what's ahead. Here in Benton County, Good Samaritan Regional Medical Center continues to have high numbers of hospitalized patients. As of yesterday, 21 people were hospitalized with COVID. That includes four in the ICU, three of whom were on ventilators. So I'll change gears to vaccination. We, our work in vaccination continues. I'll just briefly highlight that last Friday, we supported an event along with Samaritan Health Services, sponsored by the OSU Coalition of Graduate Employees, which was successful. We've got 10 school events in September and October coming up at all of the local, all the county high schools. And we're doing a lot of planning as we move closer to the approval of booster shots and eligibility for children under 12. This includes encouraging providers, including local pediatrics offices, to make plans now to accommodate vaccinating patients or holding clinics on certain days of the week. We want to use our existing infrastructure as much as possible. We did meet with Samaritan and OSU last week to discuss the need and feasibility of limited mass vaccination clinics. As you all know, Samaritan Health Clinics at Research Stadium from January to May of this year, giving almost 75,000 doses of COVID vaccine. We know that mass vaccination was needed because we have very high demand and very little supply for vaccine, and as well as a complex system for eligibility that we needed to navigate. The existing infrastructure now will be sufficient for most of the need that we'll see with boosters and with pediatrics. We have pharmacies and providers with the COVID vaccine. These are the places where vaccines are normally found, and we want to normalize finding those at those traditional locations. Samaritan, with its ongoing staffing challenges and just being under the burden of the current surge, they still are partnering to set up two scaled-down mass clinic locations. This won't look anything like Research Stadium, but they will sort of help to accommodate that overflow need beyond our existing infrastructure. There will be one in the valley and one at the coast. The valley location will be at the Lynn County Fairgrounds and Expo. And this location makes good sense, as the location is a good clinic site and it's available, unlike Research Stadium. Our neighbors in Lynn County have more need of a vaccination site, honestly, and the location is accessible and will be available to Benton County residents as well. Here in public health, we are going to continue to focus on underserved populations. That's vaccination opportunities for the houseless. CHC will continue to vaccinate its patients. We're focusing on schools, on rural areas, and on those disparities in races and ethnicities. There's a lot happening in terms of what the rollout for boosters will look like. The meetings of scientific committees do not, have not occurred yet, and so there is not guidance at this point for exactly what this rollout will look like. In many meetings with the state, they are focused on ensuring that long-term care facility residents have a means to get vaccinated and are polling public health authorities and others as to their availability to get out into the homes of people who can't make it out to sites as well. So there's a lot evolving. It's hard to be right up against the line of the plan being in effect on the 20th and the committee's meeting on the 18th. But we are continuing to do our best and to be very well-prepared for the increase in demand of vaccination. That's all I have, just for an update, and I'd be happy to take any questions you have.
April, I know that we were intending to buy a van so that we would be a little bit more nimble as Public Health Department, and I saw that in the budget, and have we been able to do that yet? And so how are we using it?
Thanks for the good question. Yes, Commissioner, we were fortunate enough to procure already stocked up and ready-to-go mobile medicine unit for vaccination. Of course, we had to do a few things to get it up to standards, put in AED, and it gets some minor pieces accomplished there. Really, our only limitation with the van is staffing. We've had an immunization nurse posted for some time, and we've had zero applicants for it. We are using it on a limited basis for now, and when we have an additional vaccinator, we do plan on using it more. However, it will be just for vulnerable populations. That's our intent. One thing that we are excited about when we do have that piece in place is to utilize the mapping that our epidemiologist has undertaken of our vaccination data with the new census data, and we can really do a lot of pinpointed outreach and education. That is already underway, that piece. So carrying that with mobile vaccination is something that we're really excited to undertake.
Thank you. Pat?
Yeah, a couple questions. On the booster shot, I've heard a lot of talk about, well, after six months or eight months, there is some decline. Would you speak to that a little bit? I assume the decline is gradual, and so there's no, it's not like, the efficacy falls off a cliff. Would you describe that a little bit, April?
Yes, Commissioner, I will do my best. The data is emerging, and it's The, the data is, is emerging, and it's doing so on a really frequent basis. It's not uncommon for vaccines to require a booster at some point due to various factors. The, and you're absolutely right, immunity doesn't fall off a cliff. It can, it can wane over some period of time. And the various studies that we've seen, some have focused on people in a certain age group, or, or they focus on any infection, and some focus on, on symptomatic infection. I think we'll learn more as, as the, the Committee of Experts come together with their recommendations. I think that we may see something that looks like, you know, people in, in certain age groups, you know, go ahead and get your booster as soon as you're eligible. Others, if you're in this certain window of time, just ensure that you get it somewhere within, within this timeframe. As I said, there's, there's just a lot emerging and a lot that's unknown. What we do know is that full vaccination with one of the mRNA vaccines continues to protect people from severe disease and death very, very well. We want to ensure that boosters come into play before that's not the case any longer, but that, that's not, that's not something that's being witnessed at this time.
Okay, thank you. And I guess my other comment, just I see the statistics in the GT, and recently Benton County, or, or our neighbor Lynn County is having oh, maybe four times as many cases as we are, and it just, I, I felt all along that, I know you and Suzanne are the face of the Benton County effort, but I really appreciate the information that we get and want to say how appreciative I am of the staff's efforts and that you give us good information and make our job relatively easy to, to follow the, the information that we're getting. So a real thank you for this, for your efforts on this marathon.
Thank you, sir. We have, we have great teams, and right back at you. You make our jobs a lot easier, too.
Thank you. Really appreciate you. Nancy, any questions? Okay. Okay, well, thank you. Much appreciate the updates, and things definitely are fluid, so want to keep, keep informed. You are also involved in the next agenda item, I believe. Next up is the discussion about the vaccine incentive draft proposal, and that came to us from Mary and Debbie from finance, but clearly is a public health matter. So Mary and Debbie, welcome.
Commissioner Ogierow, I will do an introduction to this topic, and then I'll hand it over to Debbie. Okay, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for joining us in this work session this morning. This particular agenda item is to serve as a litmus test with the Board of Commissioners on the topic of incentivizing vaccines for employees. The COVID Executive Committee, which consists of a subset of our leadership team, including myself, has been having a dialogue over the last three weeks to a month on the topic of incentivizing vaccines of our employees as opposed to mandating vaccines of our employees. And I will tell you that that conversation has ranged wildly, and there's lots of opinions on the topic of incentives versus mandating vaccines, as you are well aware. I will tell you, after we began to focus on the topic of whether or not we should mandate employees to have vaccines, the Executive Committee didn't seem to gel around that particular concept, but what they decided to do is to really focus more on incentivizing vaccines. And that conversation led to the proposal that you have in front of you this morning. Keep in mind, I'll continue to use the term litmus test. This is really the first time we're having a dialogue with the Board on incentives for employees as well as the possibility of mandatory vaccinations. With that being said, after the Executive Committee developed the proposal that's in front of you today, we then took that draft proposal to our broader leadership team last week, and we reviewed that with them, received their feedback, and there was a wide range of feedback, anywhere from concerns about the financial amount that is involved in the proposed incentive, all the way to saying that yes, we should do this. So I'll summarize those comments after Debbie walks through the proposal with you, then we'll circle back around, and I can give you some more information from the leadership team. So with that being said, we're anxious to talk to you this morning about this particular topic. Debbie Parsons is going to lead this discussion with the Board this morning, and then myself, as well as April and Suzanne and the rest of our executive team are likely to join in and help color the picture as well. So Debbie, with that being said, why don't you jump in?
Good morning, everybody. This has, this draft has gone through multiple iterations, so it, I'm, I'm really rather happy with how much collaboration has been done, not only with the executive team, but also feedback from the leadership team last week. This proposal, as you know, is, is to help obviously incentivize our staff to get the COVID vaccine. We don't know actually how many of our staff have the vaccine, which is part of the objectives of this, is to find out how many of our staff do, so what rate are we actually at? And the first part where it talks about the objectives, we have several objectives that we would hope to accomplish with this proposal, and one is to acknowledge the employees who did get the vaccine early on by choice, two, to provide an incentive to those who haven't yet gotten it, and hopefully the dollar amount threshold is at that price point that, that helps actually incentivize folks to do so. And then also with an additional payment for the booster, because just as April just talked about, the booster is an important piece to keep the efficacy of the vaccine front and center. And of course, the, the biggest objective for us is community-wide, that we as a staff of Benton County are increasing the prevalence of the vaccine in the community, so we are helping to protect the rest of our community members along with our staff. The proposal is for five hundred dollars for a, for proof of a fully vaccinated person, employee. The employee is defined as anybody currently employed, with the exception of the status of stipend, which are the election supervisor, sorry, the fairgrounds supervisors, the one time a year that we actually sort of, the paid volunteers, that's what they're called. And then, and that has to be done by December first of this year, 2021. The additional two hundred and fifty dollar payment would be for anybody who gets their booster and provides proof by December thirty-first of 2022. The funding source for this is twofold. One, there is an amount, so when you ask about the vaccination ban, we paid for the vaccination ban out of an additional CARES allotment that we were given of about five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. That has to be used by December thirty-first. As April and her team use that money, if there is any left within, say, December-ish, we will use whatever is unused, so we don't leave any of that money on the table. And then the rest of it will come from the ARPA money that has been determined to be revenue replacement for our revenue loss that Mary did the calculations for. So we will use ESS and units to actually capture this. The employee will upload a picture of their vaccine card. It will be very, it'll be, it'll be locked down to only HR seeing that. We won't have anybody else able to see that. It will just be HR. And they do that in the context of the individual medical file that they hold on each employee. There will also be an accommodation process for anybody who is, who has a bona fide religious or medical exception, and they will go through HR to determine that for ADA purposes. The very end of the proposal shows you what our estimation, and it's a conservative estimation, meaning we've accounted for every possible eligible employee at this point, which we know not every employee is going to get this, but that, those are the numbers that are in there. So with that, I will take any questions or feedback.
Yeah, well, you folks have done a really thorough job.
I, I'm not sure on the six hundred thousand, if that, what other options we have for spending that, but to me, this, the missing piece is the promotion, getting, getting people's attention. Couple of things come to mind, the, I think it wrapped up in late June, the governor's one million dollar lottery, and I think a fair amount of publicity to, for the cause. I would quibble a little bit on how it was rolled out at the end of June, when the announcement was made, and people were paying attention. The contest was over and you missed the boat. I, I think there should have been some kind of buildup to that. So I, I guess I would like to see more of a promotion component to this to really get people's attention. I think of Jesus when he was here and, and running wellness and contests, and he didn't get everybody's attention, and you could win a, remember one time the prize was a pretty nice mountain bike, and I was quite disappointed I didn't win, but I guess when you don't enter the contest, your, your chances of winning are pretty slim. But, so I, I think this is a good, solid program, but the, to me, the missing piece is more of a, a promotion angle, getting people's attention, and maybe having a lower amount guaranteed, but some, some funding for significant prizes and maybe, you know, ramping up four, five, or six significant dollar amount prizes, and, you know, and, and the last one's the big one. But I would defer to people that actually do this for, for a living, just what's effective, how to get people's attention, and maybe for a, a smaller overall dollar amount, we could have, be more effective. But I'm all in favor of the program and trying to get our numbers up. We ought to be able to do at least as well as the OSU football team, and I think they were eighty-five percent, so, and I would guess we're significantly lower than that at this point, so I think that, that's what I have, but just, just like we would do if it was a legal matter, we, we wouldn't try to figure it out ourselves. We would get professional help, and I, I, that would be my suggestion here.
Perhaps what we need to do is have a competition between us and the City of Corvallis for the rate of vaccination or something like that. That might get people a little bit more invested, Joe.
Commissioners, I just wanted to provide a little bit more feedback that might inform your additional questions and/or opinions. First of all, keep in mind that we have a whole host of employees that are already required under the governor's mandate to become vaccinated, and those are employees that are primarily in our community health centers and/or in our health department. So we do have a host of employees that are required to get the actual vaccine based on the governor's action that she took in April, and Suzanne, I think the deadline for that is October eighteen, seventeenth, for those employees to come compliant with that. Also, when you think about the wide range of opinions on this topic, I will tell you that I think our department heads also share a wide range of opinions. I can just share or summarize what those opinions were real quickly. First of all, I would say that Sheriff Van Arsdale, as well as our district attorney, John Haroldson, both expressed concerns regarding the financial aspects of the proposal and really concerned about whether or not it's enough to move the dial. Will it be enough to, to encourage more employees to get vaccinated or not? I would also tell you, based on some work that Human Resources did, as well as April and members of her team, we think that there's about seventy-one percent of our employees that are vaccinated at this point in time. So when you're wondering about where you think we're at, that's close to where we're at, and that is a informed estimate. It's certainly not, I'm not promoting it that it's exactly accurate, but it gives you an idea. Also, when you look through the other range of opinions, questions about how would new employees be impacted by this incentive that are coming on while the incentive is being offered? Also, there were concerns about the religious as well as medical exemption process that we would need to have in place that I believe is identified in the proposal that you have in front of you. How would that process work, and how would we hold people, if you will, accountable for valid religious and/or medical exceptions? Also, what about, you know, should we include family members? Should we not include family members? April also shared a concern as to if we were to offer this vaccine incentive, and then at a subsequent date decided to mandate the vaccine. How would we pivot from an incentive program to a mandatory program? And would that have been a good investment of taxpayer dollars to pivot from a incentive to a absolute requirement? I would also say there were some department heads that were supportive of moving forward with this type of incentive. May not have agreed exactly with the amounts or certain provisions, but there was some department heads that spoke in support of it. I would say, you know, the most common theme is cost and will it do enough to move employees, enough employees to really make that difference that we would like to make? Also, the, sorry, Commissioners, there was one comment that I was trying to read between the lines, but I'll try not to do that because I don't understand what I wrote. Also, I had some follow-up feedback from several department heads, once again underscoring their concerns. their concern regarding the expenditure being too big, and also the impact on how the public might view this type of expenditure to incentivize in county employees.
That is a lot to consider. And Nancy, please.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. So, to clarify, people who qualify for a legitimate exemption, will they still qualify for the cash payment?
At this time, within the draft, that they would. We're considering this a, kind of a clone of a wellness program, that within a wellness program, we give an alternate route to the same incentive to all employees, so that from an equity standpoint, that's where it stands right now, yes.
Sure, thank you. And then, do we know how this is going to be paid out? We're calling it an incentive. I see it's pre-tax. My question just has to do with, you know, how it's taxed, because we're talking about, you know, cost, we're talking about, is it going to be enough? Yeah, I'm thinking of my, my husband's paychecks. When he gets a bonus, 50% of it goes to taxes. So, you know, it's one thing to say, oh, I'm going to get 500 bucks, that's great, and then, oh, well, it's really 250, you know, does that really have as much, you know, bang or incentive to it?
So, I completely understand that. And there will be a taxable implication. I estimate, I say I estimate, it's not half of it, but it will be 15 to 20% of it at least. So, you are, that they won't receive 500 dollars. And that's why we, the communication that goes to employees will make that clear, because that has been a concern or an issue in, within pretty much any of our wellness programs.
Okay. And then, I'll just say, I mean, in general, I'm supportive of this. You know, I know no one is asking me right now about a mandate, but I'm not sure I would ever, what my feelings would be supporting a mandate if that question ever came before us. So, I really support this incentivizing option.
Derek, did you have another question or a comment that you'd like to make?
No, I just missed that last part about the incentive versus what the religious and the medical exemption, and it was answered, so thank you.
Thank you. Pat?
Yeah, a couple of follow-ups. I don't think I closed my comments on promotion. Part of that is to reduce the amount that the county is giving out, and maybe even significantly. But, a little quick arithmetic says if we have 30% unvaccinated, that's 180 staff, maybe we get 100, that's $6,000. The current proposal, that'd be $6,000 a shot. And my, my thought is, we can get people's attention for significantly less than that. But, and that's why I was referencing the wellness program that HR has done in the past, that not everybody won the mountain bike. They were, that was the big prize, and it tapered off from there. I guess the other thing is, we're trying to get our numbers up so we don't at some point in the future have to do a mandatory, I mean, that, I assume the governor could do something like that, and we're trying to do everything we can to get voluntary compliance up to, I've heard April talk about the 85% number would be wonderful, their number would be even more wonderful, but have some, some goal like that, and that we're doing everything we can to not make it any more mandatory than the governor has already done.
I think, we have to remember that this is much more of a values-based decision than it is a rational decision on most people's part, and so incentives have not been wildly effective. But if we are going to provide an incentive, I think it needs to be substantial enough to actually get people's attention. And I think 500 dollars is probably a pretty good level for that. Frankly, you know, I was one of those when we first started discussing that ARPA dollars, who was interested in being able to provide recognition of what a tough 18 months this has been. And this is one way of doing that. It acknowledges those early adopters, those who got the vaccine early, and it acknowledges, you know, what a stressful period of time, how much pivoting and resilience people have had to have in order to continue to work for the benefit of all of our communities. So, I've been a little on the fence about this, but overall, I think from that standpoint, I'm fine with the dollar stump, not just as a vaccine incentive. And the other is that I do think it's important to know overall what proportion of our workforce is vaccinated. You know, we've got some departments that are very small, and if, if, if most people are unvaccinated and Delta were to, you know, rip through, we could be left unsatied. And for certain units, you know, especially in law enforcement, or, you know, possibly roads crew, and we have a winter ice storm, those are, those are critical. That becomes an emergency. So, the information aspect is also important, and I'm very glad to hear that all that information would be kept within our HR systems in a secure way. We already have those systems in place. It's not something new. So, I think at this point, I have to say that I'm supportive of this approach.
Commissioners, also, just to share a couple of bits of additional information, and before I do that, I want to check and see if Tracy Martino, our HR director, is calling in. I don't see her on our screen. She is on vacation this week and indicated she would try and join us this morning. In the absence of Tracy being here, I will share that Tracy's had communications with two of our labor unions, one being APSME, the other one being O&amp;A, and both of those unions articulated that they, when it comes to the mandating of vaccines, while they are very supportive of employees getting the vaccine, those two unions oppose any efforts of employers to actually require or mandate the vaccine. So, just when we're talking about the other end of the spectrum, Commissioner Wise's point, whether or not we should mandate or not mandate, I just wanted to share that information since I was informed of it on Friday.
Thank you. Just one piece of clarification around the funding. We intend to do everything possible for there to be no residual unused funds in those equity funds. Very concerned about what the optics would look like if we were to step away from using them for equity purposes and using them for better county employees instead. And we have, as you know, an equity plan that is formally submitted and approved by the state, signed off on by Commissioner Ogierow and April Holland, and I would request that any change to that equity plan, including used for this purpose, be thoroughly reviewed before that simply be assumed to be an available source. But as I said, we intend to do everything we can do to use that funding to support the people it is intended to support, even if that means buying lots and lots of gift cards before the end of the year to be used into the next year.
Thank you, Suzanne. I did not realize that that was the equity funds specifically, that pot of money that expires at the end of December. So, I understand your concern, and I, I think that the approach that's being proposed by finance to use it only if there is a remainder and that we don't have other ways to spend it makes sense. And the essentially de-federalized component of the ARPA dollars is eligible use, and I mean, it doesn't matter. The de-federalization makes it available for us to use this way, put it that way. Okay.
I would also say that I'm a little skeptical about whether or not this will be effective. I hope that it will. I do appreciate the expression of just, the reflection of appreciation for what all of our employees have experienced over the course of this entire pandemic. And if recognizing that with these payments, and hopefully getting that increased vaccination rate up is a side benefit of that, then, then all the better, because the ultimate goal is to get as many people who can be vaccinated, vaccinated. But I think that what I, from a public health perspective, I'm not sure how effective we'll be with this, but I do very much appreciate the expression of support for our employees and recognizing all that they have experienced in the last 18 months.
Commissioners, I would also like to ask April to expand a little bit on the pivot point that I brought up earlier, is, you know, if there is any appetite amongst the board for mandating requirements at some ti, mandating vaccine requirements at some point in time in the future, it would be valuable for our executive committee to have an understanding of that, because I do think April has a good point. How do we pivot from a incentive to a actual requirement? So, I would first ask to go to April and ask her to share any additional thoughts, and then, if the board has any feedback similar to what Commissioner Wise was referencing, we can put the question in front of you regarding mandatory vaccine requirements, but if the board has any idea how you might feel on that topic, it would be good for us to understand that as well today. So, April, anything that you would like to share?
Sure, thank you, Joe. Mandating vaccines isn't something that we're seeing a lot of at, at the county level. You know, we've seen Multnomah County, and then, of course, we have mandatory vaccines for educators and healthcare workers. A handful of states have, have mandated for its workforce. I understand that it's a difficult decision. I just think if, if the board goes forward with an incentive program, and it's not successful, and we continue to see, or if we do see situations where community transmission is, is very high, and that our workforce is getting disrupted due to that, we may see more and more need for mandating COVID vaccine, particularly, you know, we have one vaccine that's FDA-approved. I feel that the others will be close behind, and just something to consider. We don't want a disruption in our workforce, obviously, and incentives have been shown to be somewhat effective in some cases. That's pretty much all, all I have to share. It's a big concern, though, that we could make this big, you know, show of appreciation and work really hard, including, you know, some, there are resources out there that can help educate and, and provide outreach to people, give them resources that are trusted, et cetera, but it may not be effective, and we may need to get to that next step of mandating vaccines.
I, I hear you, and a stepwise approach may still be sound. It will give us a lot better data than, you know, about where we stand, and about what the challenges really are. So, I guess I'm still supportive of the proposal as it stands at this time. Nancy, Pat?
Yeah, again, I'll just say, well, it's, it's hard to say. You know, it, a future decision is going to be based on, you know, future facts and future, you know, things that haven't happened yet. So, you know, can I say with certainty yes or no at this point? Probably not. I will say that, you know, I tend to lean towards the not wanting to mandate it. You know, is it my job to encourage people to get vaccinated? Yes. Is it my job to, you know, support people and say, please do it? Yes. Is it my job to say, you have to do it, you must do it? You know, I'm not sure about that. So, again, if the, you know, if the situation arises in the future where things are to a different point, you know, and there's more arguments that are convincing, then, you know, maybe I would make that decision, but yeah, not something that I'd feel like I'd be leaning towards at this time.
Yes, this is a two-part question. I am not in support of the proposal as it stands. I think we can, like has been referenced, different incentives have been tried, and I'd like to see, you know, including high-dollar incentives. I think we can get people's attention for less than $600,000, and, you know, $6,000 per shot on up. I mean, that's at 100 of our estimated 180 staff that's not vaccinated, and that, that may be a little optimistic. So, I'd like to see a revised proposal with, with more of a promotion content and a less, a smaller overall dollar amount. As far as mandates, I'm definitely not there yet. The governor, and I think that probably should come from the governor, do it on a state level, and then we could, you know, go along or slightly modify what's, what's going on. But at this point, I, I would like to see what we can do on a voluntary basis, and then just also monitor what's, what's happening in the real world as far as number of cases and hospitalization rates.
Thank you. So, as I understand where we are at this point, I believe that Nancy and I are both comfortable with moving forward with the proposal, but Pat is not. So, I don't know whether we want to formalize that with a vote, or whether this is enough to move forward at the staff level. Joe?
Commissioners, I think you have a couple of options today. You can choose to take action on this and move it forward via a vote, or to, to not move it forward based on a vote. I think we also have another alternative, where the executive committee could go back and work on the proposal and bring an alternative proposal to you forward at your next board meeting, based on the feedback we're hearing today. So, that is certainly an option as well, or the board can frankly table this topic if you wish to not proceed with it. It would be helpful, I think, for us to arrive at a decision sometime between now and two weeks from now, because I think time, time is of the essence, as it as it relates to incentivizing those folks who may not have taken the vaccine yet and to help expedite getting the information out and employees deciding if they are going to move forward with getting the vaccine and then getting the vaccine all in a timely manner to help us maybe with this delta bearing at this point.
Okay. I guess Nancy, Pat, do you have strong feelings? Would you like to make a motion?
I would make a motion to direct staff to come back with an alternative proposal that most likely had a smaller dollar amount than the current proposal.
Is there a second? Hearing no second, do I have an alternative motion?
I will move to approve the vaccine incentive proposal.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Two in favor, one opposed, and we will move forward. So thank you. This is the first time we've had a split vote in support. And I think that we can work, you know, let Joe speak to make this as effective as we can. I take your suggestions to heart, Pat, when it comes to promotion. We need to do a good job of that. Joe, any further comments?
Commissioners, I'll take this item up with our executive committee tomorrow at our meeting and we'll begin working with all of the folks involved to put this program together and get it rolled out. And we'll certainly take the information we heard from the board today and work towards achieving the goals you identified.
Thank you. And I would like to take a five-minute break. Blue check, 10:15. We have Jen Ambul with us to discuss our next item, which is a budget amendment.
Good morning, commissioners. I am here to just discuss with you the amendment needed for the 2123 budget that we have just recently adopted. There are five funds that need some changing. So we're just going to go over them one by one, same format as always. And if you have any questions, please feel free to just give me a little nod so I know to stop and figure that all out for you. The first fund that I would like to discuss is the general fund. There is a total net appropriation increase of $693,270. Within that, the general government operations is increasing $561,500. And that is the equity funds that were referenced previously in the meeting. We need to set up the budget for those funds. The appropriations would increase for possibly anticipated personnel costs, the vaccination incentives in terms of community outreach, various materials and services, and then the purchase of the mobile vaccination van. Next up was the natural areas, parks, and events operations. There is an increase of $121,600. We are making a transfer from the fair fund. When building the budget and combining parks and fair into essentially NAEP, the temporary staff and benefit costs were unintentionally budgeted under the fairgrounds operations rather than parks maintenance in the general fund. So we are essentially moving the budget authority over to the general fund from the fair. And then the last item in the general fund is the contingency. It would increase $10,107. And we did receive notification from the Oregon Judicial Department that the revenue to the law library was a little higher than anticipated. And so we are just going to put that in that cost center's contingency. And so that would be all of the adjustments to the general fund at this time. Are there any questions? All right. So next up is the fair fund. So this is the second half of that reallocation of the temporary and the benefits for those personnel. The cultural and education operations, we are decreasing the appropriation there, the $121,600. And then we create a transfer line and increase the appropriation, the corresponding $121,600 to create that appropriation authority to move that budget from the fairgrounds operations over to the general fund and park maintenance. And I'm assuming there are no questions on that one since you didn't have any on the other half of it. This one here, I would like to note that the name of this fund has been updated. This was formerly labeled as the HUD block grant fund. But now that we are getting more and more grants of different varieties, the decision was made to rename that to the special grant fund. So within the special grant fund, there is a net appropriation increase of $1,100,000. And that is within community services operations. There were a number of community development block grants that were applied for. We did put some of those in the 1921, last supplemental of that budget cycle. But unfortunately, it was too late in the 2123 to get that in without having to go back to the budget committee and go through the whole process again. So instead, we are bringing it here to you now. And those block grants, I believe, you have some knowledge of from a meeting with Mary. And that would be the childcare one, the food bank, and then housing assistance. And so correspondingly, then, we are increasing appropriations for pass-through contracts to those outside agencies. Are there any questions on that one? All right. Two more small changes. The court security fund, there is a net appropriation increase of $19,984. Again, that was part of the notification that we did receive from OJD stating that the revenue was a little higher than anticipated. And so we just correspondingly increased then the contracted amount for court security services to balance that fund out, that $19,984. Any questions on that one? All right. And then the last one is for the trust fund, the small net appropriation increase of $8,743. And that is in justice services operations. And this is the last amount of increased revenue from OJD. And so what we did was just increase the appropriations for the court mediation services under professional services to balance out that fund. So overall, we will be coming back to you with the public hearing and requesting a total net appropriation increase of $1,821,934. And that would be broken down between operations of $1,690,227, the creation of the transfer, which was $121,600, and the addition to the contingency of $10,107. And that would be the end of the supplemental budget. Are there any other questions?
Questions? Okay. Well, I'm grateful that we are able to pass this much money through in community development block grant funds to our various community partners. And thank you in finance for taking on that extra bit of work to get these funds out for childcare and for food bank, et cetera.
You are welcome. Thank you.
Ready for a motion?
I'll move to forward the supplemental budget to the September 21st, 2021 board meeting for the public hearing.
Second. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May I should pass this? Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you, Jen. Okay. Onward to item 4.4, the justice system improvement program of one measure of discussion. Nick?
Thank you, commissioners. Jim, if I may share my screen. Jim, I might share my screen. I think I'm just going to lead off by putting up the calendar to kind of calibrate everybody's knowledge of where we stand relative to a bond measure date. My apology. There we go. Hopefully, everybody can see this okay. Let me do. Yeah. So just as a reminder, we had intended to go for our bond measure in May of 2022. We're here today to discuss whether to adopt an ultimate date. As a reminder, local option levy, they were originally scheduled to go, hoping to go in November of '21. That date's been pushed to May, so we now have two potential taxing ballot measures on the same ballot, which isn't ideal. And so here to look at some alternatives. Let me just stop there for a second and make sure everyone, make sure there aren't any questions. All right, I'll keep moving then. In terms of our options, we can still, we can still go in May. I'll share that's not necessarily a recommended solution. Overloading a single ballot measure with multiple tax measures is not ideal, but it is a possibility. We can consider one of the other dates in 2022 or beyond. So that would be either March or August, special elections, or the November election. I will share that the March and August elections would require a minimum of 50% of the public voting to approve a ballot measure, a tax ballot measure, so that's highly unlikely to occur. A November election, of course, will have a larger turnout. That may or may not be an advantage or disadvantage, but it is expected to have a larger turnout than, say, a May election. And we could also consider the May 2023 election as an alternative. However, if you look at this, this chart here, you'll see that the Paloma School District Local Option Levy is scheduled for May 2023, even though, you know, that's not a major measure in terms of the whole county. Our last jail bond measure actually lost because of lack of support in Paloma. So if those votes were making a choice between school local option levy versus JSEF, that could potentially be an issue. So anyway, this is, this is kind of the lay of the land. And I'm going to stop sharing. In terms of costs, there are some real costs with having, if we were to decide to extend our ballot measure timing. Certainly, DLR and other consulting costs are probably going to be, you know, nominal compared to the project escalation. But nevertheless, you know, $50,000 to $70,000 in additional consulting fees over that period of time. There is the possibility of bond rates changing, so I want to acknowledge that. Nobody has a crystal ball, but we've been at a, you know, a historical low for quite a while now. Inflationary pressures are on the horizon, so it's not unreasonable to expect bond rates to deteriorate slightly. I don't think anybody is expecting a major shift, but there may be some deterioration. Project escalation costs are by far the most significant. You see in the filing that if we don't commence construction by July of '23, which means passing a bond measure approximately 12 months before that to accommodate for design, DLR is estimating at least a 1% increase. And then if you go to April '24, that goes to 3.4%, and then April '25, 6.8%. These are just estimates, but it's not at all unreasonable to assume, you know, short of a, short of a recession or something, that we could, we could easily have, you know, a million dollars in project escalation costs by pushing to November of next year on a $100 million bond. So I just want you to be aware that there's some real costs there. On the plus side, November does put us farther away from our current labor negotiations with at least one of our unions. Labor negotiations are a considered risk to underwriters and investors that you're in mediation, will have to be disclosed. And so the further you get from that event, probably the better. So there is one, one small silver lining in, in a delay. And not to mention, you know, public engagement opportunity, et cetera. In terms of a recommendation, staff is recommending that we move forward within November 2022 date. I will share one comment from DLR's Justin Stranzl regarding November, which was that, you know, in his experience and DLR's experience, a number of counties that have gone out for measures related to justice system facilities have, have failed and had to come back. And so Justin was just sharing that, you know, if you go in November, you have another opportunity to come back in May of 2023. And so keep that in mind. But staff recommendation is that we move forward with November of 2022.
We've already failed. We don't need to fail again, right? So hopefully, November 2022 will do it. Questions for Nick?
Nikki, you mentioned voter turnout. Just off, off the top of my head, it's close to double the turnout going from May primary to November general election. Is that ballpark?
Ballpark, yes. I, I haven't done a, you know, a thorough analysis, but it is a, it is a significant, it is a significant difference. 30% is in May to, you know, upper 50% to 60% in November.
Or, or 80, depending on.
Depending on the election, yep. And it's going to be, it's going to be a pretty stacked, I mean, at the national level, it's going to be a significant election.
My concern is fundraising for public outreach. If we have to reach twice as many people, we have to raise and spend more money to, you know, reach the voters. I mean, it almost sounds like we're, we're stuck with November. And just to be clear, I have no, I think May of next year is, is not, not an option with the school board on the ballot, the corralist. I just have real concerns about November. And like you say, the people that have monitored other elections, say, November is is less than ideal. So I guess, and, and my thought is that this is, this is a tough sell. I mean, we, we have to have most, if not any, all, all of the large chunks in our favor. And to me, this one makes it tougher to get the yes.
I don't, don't disagree with any of your sentiments, and you're right. Yeah, we need, we need everything to work out very well to pass this. I think there's one consideration, and that is, so I have acted on, you know, the, your, the Commissioner's wishes relative to a political strategist. I've scoped the position. We're at the point of discussing it now at Ops Team as far as timing. And in fact, are looking at timeline overall. Were we to adopt a November date so that we have something to shoot for, bring on a new political strategist, probably in the January timeframe? And we're he or she to say, not, you know, not a good idea to go in November. I'm assuming there'd be some analysis and data to go with it, with that recommendation. But, you know, we would have the option of, of pushing to May if, if we wanted to. So your correct path of November at this point is sort of the, the lesser of evils, and we still have, you know, an option of going in May of '23. But honestly, I would want to get more input on making that, that change.
Well, I appreciate that comment because I didn't know how, how firm a decision today would, would affect the calendar. And as long as we have some options and could get more pluses and minuses. So November '22 versus May of '23, I, I, I'm okay proceeding. Because I, I just, I've said it before, but failure isn't an option. And the idea of going in November and losing is, and our backup would be May of... Well, I would defer to the people that do this kind of analysis for a living are more, more into than I am. But I appreciate that we still, if we, say, let's, let's think for November, we, we have some option of things in our minds if, if and when we get information saying that's, that's a bad idea.
Yep. Agreed.
So I'm, I'm good with the November 2022 date. And Nick, like you said, there are some silver linings, you know, we'll be further out from the labor negotiations. That's good. And you know, there may be some challenges with the November election, but the good news is we know about those ahead of time. And from a political action committee standpoint, you know, that'll give us time to overcome those challenges. And in addition, I think the group that usually provides the most volunteer work for political action committees is likely to be very active in November. So I think that that could actually be, you know, also a silver lining.
Yep, that's true.
I think I'm ready for a motion.
Page 39. I've got it. Let's see. I move to adopt a Justice System Improvement Program Bond Measure Date of November 2022.
Hold, hold a second there.
All in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Joe?
Commissioners, I would suggest that a letter be drafted for the Board Chair's signature to inform the other taxing jurisdictions regarding the action that you've taken. I feel a need to put a stake in the ground at this point to make sure that others know the county's plans. So a concurrence, that can certainly come from you, or if you prefer, I sent it. I can certainly do that as well.
I'd be happy to have it go out over my name. I think that's an excellent idea. Thank you. And hopefully, Nick, you can prep that, and I can just sign it.
Yep, not a problem. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I believe we're moving onward. Let's see. We have consent calendar proclamations, and we try to start our open hearings as close to 11:00 as possible. So unless there's an urgent need for a short break, I would like to move on into our, into our formal business meeting. So the first item is our consent calendar.
I'll, I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. Thank you. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Next up is our Series of Proclamations. And the first one on the list is, comes to us from the Benton County Sheriff's Office to proclaim National Preparedness Month. Do we have Brian with us?
Yes, morning Commissioners and everyone else on the call. Just a quick little backdrop of this proclamation, kind of an annual thing. Every September is National Preparedness Month across, across country. This, this time around, it's particularly important, not only because of COVID and the heat waves and all the other emergency theme, but particularly because today marks the anniversary of the Labor Day fires, which, as everyone knows, I hope on the call, greatly impacted the entire state, including our community, displaced a lot of individuals. At the very least, it caused a lot of concern around the state related to air quality and evacuation routes and everything else. So with that, it is a good time to do the proclamation, as well as to just note that every year, September is that big push. There are plenty of other months with different themes associated with national preparedness. But this is a generalized preparedness message to our entire community, to be prepared and get involved.
Thank you. So I take it we're not going to read this one aloud, but would be happy to entertain a motion to make this proclamation.
I'll, I'll move to approve September's National Preparedness Month in Benton County and its proclamation number 21, day 016.
Second. Thank you. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Great. Sheriff, any further comments about preparedness in our team?
No, I want to, I want to make sure that this is Brian's time to shine. His area of expertise, and I don't want to steal any of that from him.
Okay. Well, thank you, Brian, to you and Sierra, and all of your volunteers and support throughout the organization for the work that you've been able to do. And partnerships with the city and other entities, of course, as well, of OSU and Greater Samarit, Greater, can't even say it, Samaritan. So thank you. Next up, we have Suicide Prevention Proclamation, Suicide Prevention Awareness and National Recovery Month in Benton County. Danielle.
Hi, good morning Commissioners. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk to you guys about National Suicide Prevention and National Recovery Month. I will read the proclamation because that's just easier for me to do. So in the month of September 2021 is National Suicide Prevention Week and National Recovery Month, when millions of people around the world join, join their voices to share a message, message of hope and healing. And whereas these observances are united in raising awareness that prevention is possible, treatment is effective, and people do recover. And whereas in these challenging times, messages of hope and healing are needed more than ever. And whereas Benton County residents should be able to access high-quality prevention, support rehabilitation, and treatment services to lead to recovery and a healthy lifestyle. And whereas every day in Benton County, people enter into treatment, enter treatment into behavioral health services and community supports, and begin the road to wellness and recovery. And whereas resiliency begins early in life within families, daycares, and schools, and can be strengthened and reinforced throughout the lifespan. And whereas recovery and wellness encompass the whole individual, including mind, body, spirit, and community. And whereas Benton County's plan for suicide prevention urges all residents to play a role in suicide prevention and promoting health and wellness. And whereas the benefits of preventing and overcoming mental health challenges, suicide attempts, loss, and substance abuse are significant and valuable to individuals, families, and our community at large. And whereas it is essential that we educate residents about suicide, mental health and substance use problems, and the ways they affect people in our community. And we must encourage relatives, friends, and coworkers, and providers to recognize the signs of a problem and guide those in need to appropriate services and supports. And whereas Suicide Prevention Week and Recovery Month inspire millions of Americans to raise awareness, build resiliency, and find hope. So we are asking with those ideals that we proclaim the month of September 2021 as Suicide Prevention and Recovery Month, in assisting with finding hope, building resiliency, and supporting recovery.
Thank you, Danielle. Any questions for Danielle or a motion?
I'll, I'll move proclaiming September 2021 Suicide Prevention Awareness, National Recovery Month in Benton County, proclamation number 2021, day 017.
Second.
All in favor, please signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you for all you and your team do.
Thank you.
Next up is Constitution Day proclamation. And I am not sure who we have to represent that one, whether it's one of our Commissioners.
Yeah, so I was asked, I believe I'm supposed to read it, Teresa sent it to me, so I will read it. In the matter of proclaiming September 17, 2021 as Constitution Day in Benton County, our founding fathers, in order to secure the blessings of liberty for themselves and their posterity, did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States of America and signed it on September 17, 1787. And the conventions of a number of the states, having at the time of their adopting the constitution, expressed a desire in order to prevent misconstruction or abuse of its powers, that further declaratory and restrictive clauses shall be added, and which subsequently became known as the Bill of Rights, Amendments 1 through 10, December 15, 1791. And subsequent amendments enacted throughout the years strengthened the rights of citizens and ensured their right to vote. And Amendment 13, Section 1, declared that neither slavery nor involuntary servitude, except as a punishment for crime, whereof the party shall have been duly convicted, shall exist within the United States or any place subject to its jurisdiction, December 6, 1865. And Amendment 14, Section 1, declared that all persons born or naturalized in the United States and subject to the jurisdiction thereof are citizens of the United States and of the state wherein they reside. No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws, July 9, 1868. And Amendment 15, Section 1, declared the right of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of race, color, or previous condition of servitude, February 3, 1870. And Amendment 19, declared the right of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or any state on account of sex, August 18, 1920. And Amendment 24, declared the right of citizens of the United States to vote in any primary or other election for president or vice president, for electors for president or vice president, or for senator or representative in Congress, shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or any state by reason of failure to pay any poll tax or other tax, January 23, 1964. And Amendment 26, Section 1, declared the rights of citizens of the United States who are 18 years or older to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of age, July 1, 1971. It is of great importance that all citizens fully understand the provisions and principles in the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and subsequent amendments. And the 234th anniversary of the citing of the original Constitution provides an opportunity for all Americans to reflect on the rights and privileges of citizenship as well as its responsibilities. Now therefore be it proclaimed that September 17, 2021 is recognized as Constitution Day in Benton County, and citizens are urged and encouraged to reflect on the benefits of our Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and subsequent amendments, and the privileges and responsibilities of American citizenship.
Thank you, Nancy. I know we talked about having a Spanish-language version, Rosio. Were we able to do that? Are you here for the following proclamation?
I'm here for the following proclamation.
Thank you. I know that our intent is in future to have the Constitution or proclamation also in both languages. Okay. I am ready for a motion.
I'll move to proclaim September 17, 2021 as Constitution Day in Benton County, proclamation number 2021, day 018.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Think it's always valuable to remind ourselves about these basic foundational documents that underpin our democracy. So thank you, and appreciate your reading, Nancy. And I would now like to welcome both Rosio and Johan for the next proclamation, in the matter of proclaiming September 15 to October 15 Hispanic Heritage Month in Benton County.
Thank you, Commissioner Ojero. Thank you for having me today, meaning of Rosio Munoz. And I will be reading the, in the matter of proclaiming September 15 to October 15, Hispanic Heritage Month in Benton County. Hispanic Heritage Month is an annual observance celebrating Hispanic and Latina people, cultures, and history. The celebration was first observed as Hispanic Heritage Week in 1968, and expanded it in 1988 as Hispanic Heritage Month. Unlike most heritage and history months, Hispanic Heritage Month starts in the middle of the month, September 15, and ends on October 15. The start that was, the start date was chosen to honor multiple countries celebrating their independence days on or near September 15, including Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, Chile, and Mexico. Every year, the National Council of Hispanic Employment Program's managers helps choose the theme. Benton County joins jurisdictions nationwide as it celebrates the 2021 theme Esperanza, a celebration of Hispanic heritage and hope. Hispanic and Latina heritage was crucial to the history of Oregon. The first Spanish people arrived in present-day Oregon as early as 1542. Many Mexican people were part of the Westward Movement, including vaqueros, that aided in Oregon territory settlement. Most of the Hispanic and Latina population in Oregon were made up of Mexican people and their descendants, who were a crucial part of Oregon's development as railroad staff and farmworkers during World War I and the Great Depression and the World War II. The Braceto program brought many Mexican immigrants who helped sustain Oregon's economy. Today, we still have a large population of Hispanic and Latina farmworkers in Oregon, as well as a variety of other professions. Hispanic and Latina people are the fastest-growing population in the United States and Oregon, as well as the largest racial and ethnic minority population. They speak a variety of languages, such as Spanish, English, and Mam. The majority of Hispanic and Latina people are younger than 18, showing the rising population and a critical need for us to celebrate Hispanic and Latina street traditions and cultures in our schools and communities. Hispanic and Latina people have faced many forms of discrimination. Oregon has a shameful history of racist and xenophobic practices that harm Hispanic and Latina people. While changes are being made to become more equitable and to right these historic wrongs, we must also continue to address our historic and listen, our history, excuse me, and listen to our communities to enable equitable practices and policies. In Benton County, organizations such as Casa Latinos Unidos and Oregon State University Centro Cultural Zetas Chavez are dedicated to supporting the lives of Hispanic and Latina community members. We thank them for their work in community and commit ourselves to continue and improve collaborative efforts with them and other organizations. We also celebrate and appreciate our Hispanic and Latina business owners, migrant workers, educators, healthcare staff, volunteers, and community members who help make Benton County a wonderful community. While the majority of Hispanic and Latina people in Oregon argue it's wrong, there are so many Hispanic and Latina people who are immigrants. We celebrate our immigrant population and welcome them to Benton County community. Benton County stands in solidarity with the majority of Americans calling for an immediate end to the separation of families at the border, closing of child detention camps, and establishment of compassionate process for refugee and asylum requests. We value respecting human rights, equity, and dignity. We join our community in showing hope for a future, hope for a better tomorrow by taking action today. And reflecting on our nation's rich Hispanic heritage, let us take pride in our unique and vibrant history, and recommit to a shared future of freedom, prosperity, and opportunity for all. Therefore, be it hereby proclaimed that September 15 to October 15, 2021, is Hispanic Heritage Month in Benton County, and encourages all community members to join in this circumstance. Gracias.
Thank you, Rosio. Okay, I am ready to entertain a motion.
Well, I'll move to proclaim September 15 to October 15 Hispanic Heritage Month in Benton County, proclamation 2021, day 019.
Second.
You're muted, Dan. My apologies. All in favor, please indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, much gracias. Next up, we have a couple of public hearings. First is our public hearing on, second hearing of transient lodging tax, Benton County Code Chapter 39, as he answers with us.
Thank you, Chair. I'm looking, I don't see Mary Ottley. That's okay, I can, I can carry this forward. The transient lodging tax is something Benton County enacted two years ago. You have opened a public hearing, right?
I now open the public hearing. Didn't my staff--
So the transient lodging tax was enacted by Benton County, I think it was two years ago, with the full expectation that the City Corvallis and Benton County were going to work together, cooperate, and ultimately, the city was going to collect Benton County's transient lodging taxes. As, as things progressed, that ended up not happening, and instead of the city collecting our transient lodging tax, the State Department of Revenue has stepped in around the state and is primarily becoming the collector of this tax on behalf of cities and counties around the state. In order for Benson County to take advantage of the state's willingness to collect this tax, we have to modify a couple of items within our ordinance to fit what the state does. Clearly, what the state is implementing is a one-size-fits-all approach, which makes sense. It can't try to administer 100, 125 different systems with different penalties and different fees and different time, time schedules. So it has asked all county cities to utilize the same basic structure. And I will just go through the three changes that we are proposing in Chapter 39. The first is on page 96, and it is adding a definition of tax administrator to include the Department of Revenue. And for obvious reasons, the Department of Revenue wanted to be assured that it has the authority under our code to collect the tax. That's what adding that definition does. The other two changes are on pages 100 and 101, and this really is the, the meat of the changes that we needed to enact. Did I say 100, 101? Yeah, I meant 101, 102. This changes the amount that we charge and the state collects for fees and for penalties. And again, it brings our ordinance back into line with what everyone else is charging because this way, I suppose, the Department of Revenue just punches a button on their computer program for those renters, owners who haven't paid within 30 days, so that their penalty is consistent across the board. So this is really an effort to bring ourselves in line with the DOR's request. And the other component to this is that we'd like to have this, well, DOR needs it in place by the end of the month so it can begin collecting taxes in the final quarter of 2021. Hence the, the rush to get this to you. And, and on behalf of Mary Ottley, I apologize for bringing this to you so quickly without much prep work, but it isn't much change, and it does need to go into effect before October, if we hope to collect the fund. Mary, do you have anything to add?
I do just a follow-up on the relationship we have with the City of Corvallis. The City of Corvallis, as you know, collects our taxes for us. They were going down the road of, they were going to implement effective October 1. Have now had conversations with Ryan Cito, their finance director. And I think they're going to hold off and wait for us. So we're working on an MOU. So you should see an MOU here shortly that says we're going to all, we're going to do this together. Because I was really concerned of the disconnect and how we were going to tell our taxpayers who to send the money to and that. So I think we're, we're, we're almost there. So stay tuned for that in the next couple of weeks.
That's good to hear. I have one question about this. I am grateful to the Department of Revenue for stepping in, because I know they have much more leverage with the VRBOs and Airbnb's of the world in terms of actually of having the right information and collecting the tax. But what is there to prevent the Department of Revenue from getting their sticky hands on local monies and charging us more over time for collecting said local transient lodging tax?
Well, that's an excellent question, and I know Mary has an excellent answer.
No, I don't. FYI, the City of Corvallis is right now the only entity going down this path. So by default, we're, we're going down it with them. The state, when they initially rolled this out, their pitch was that-- The state, when they initially rolled this out, their pitch was that as more entities come into the state collection, the rate should mitigate and stabilize. And so, right now, the startup is, it is pretty costly. You know, we're going to get hit pretty hard with some fees that we're not paying the city of Corvallis right now. But there's, you know, there's savings in numbers, and so, we're hoping the other cities and counties will see some value in particularly the database and the outreach that the state has that we don't have.
Well, in other words, we're going to have to keep our eyes on this, and it's in our interest to encourage our fellow commissioners around the states to also join in for the benefit of all of us. Okay, are there other questions for staff at this time? Is there anyone who wishes to testify on this matter? Any public comment on amendment to Chapter 39? Okay, hearing done, I will close the public hearing. And we're ready for either further discussion or a motion.
I'll move to enact ordinance number 2021, page 0306, amending BCC Chapter 39 to conduct, and to conduct a first reading of the ordinance.
Second. All in favor, please signify with an "aye."
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right. Need me to read it, or do we, do we see a new excellent reader in Commissioner Wise? I have to say, Nancy, that was an excellent reading of the Constitution Day, which was very lengthy.
You know, it was very lengthy. I swear, it's almost as long as the Constitution itself.
I wondered how deep you were going to go. All right. So, would you like me to read this?
Go for it.
All right. Before the Board of Commissioners for the State of Oregon, for the County of Benton, in the matter of amending Benton County Code, Chapter 39, to authorize the Department of Revenue to collect tax, ordinance number 2021-0306, the Benton County Board of Commissioners ordain as follows. Short title, this ordinance shall be known as Amendment to Benton County Code, Chapter 39, Transient Lodging Tax. And come back to you as a non-public hearing item on September 21 for the second reading, and it will take effect on October 21 if there is a second reading.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to thank Vamps also for sending this out so far in advance. That was great. Totally had all the time to read it, look it over. It was great. Thank you, Vamps.
I'm just a little bit disappointed with all that time you didn't have a couple of questions. Oh, oh, I know. Be careful what you ask for.
Where's the money?
That's Mary, that's Mary Bailowick.
Okay, moving on. We, the next item is in the matter of the second reading, revising floodplain codes, ordinance number 2021-0304, and Toby is on the line, I see she's unmuted.
Sure. Okay. So, thank you. So, yeah, this is the second reading for the amendment for the floodplain ordinance. The first reading was last month, and once this reading is done, then the code amendment, I believe, will be effective October 7. The revisions are required for continued compliance with our floodplain program and with the state and the community rating system as well.
Are there any questions or comments for Toby? O'Gregan? Okay. Then, once again, I am ready for a motion.
I'll move to conduct the second reading and adopt ordinance number 2021, page 0304, revising the development code as proposed in planning file number LU21-032.
Second. All in favor, please signify with an "aye."
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, sorry.
You want me to read this one as well?
Sure.
Before the Board of Commissioners for the State of Oregon, for the County of Benton, in the matter of amending floodplain regulations with the Benton County Development Code, specifically Chapters 51, 57, 83, 88, 94, 95, 97, and 99, ordinance number 2021-0304. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Benton County ordained as follows, short title, amendments to the Benton County Development Code Regarding Floodplain Development. And as Toby noted, this will become effective October 7.
Thank you. And thank you, Toby and Greg. And we have one more second hearing from Community Development, and that is to Chapter 40, extending the vehicle camping program. Rebecca?
Yeah, so I met with you guys several weeks ago where we conducted the first reading of the amendment to Chapter 40, three-vehicle camping at religious institutions to extend the interim date for one more year to allow for the public outreach to be conducted to ensure that this code provision responds to the need of our community. So, today, we are doing the second reading, and if conducted, this would then go into effect October 7 and extend to December 2022.
Any questions for staff? I'm ready for a motion.
I'll move to conduct the second reading of the ordinance extending the sunset date of the Benton County Code, Chapter 40.
Second. All in favor, signify with an "aye."
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Vamps, through the honors, please.
All right. Greg, you want me? Before the Board of Commissioners for the State of Oregon, County of Benton, in the matter of extending the sunset date of Benton County Code, Chapter 40, vehicle camping at religious institutions, ordinance number 2021-0305. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Benton County ordained as follows, short title, extending the sunset date of Benton County Code, Chapter Regarding Vehicle Camping at Religious Institutions. And again, this will become effective October 7.
Thank you. I appreciate this and look forward to working through and making it permanent as we move forward and have time. Okay. We are now moving into departmental reports and requests, and our first item is 8.1 in the matter of adopting county policy number AE104, county response to disasters. So, I believe we've got Brian and it looks like Lilia, and Joe is here, who's saying on this one, I guess? Nope.
Nope. One is primarily Brian. Commissioners, good morning. I am here as the Chair of the Policy Oversight Committee. Typical practice when policy comes to the Board is for a member of the Policy Oversight Committee to attend as well to be able to answer any questions about process or comments that the policy committee had, or if there are any, you know, potential outstanding disagreements between policy author or committee. So, I particularly wanted to join today and help Brian out because his policy Brian started working on, actually, two years ago, two summers ago, when I was pulling together my policy notes from the first time, the Policy Oversight Committee started to look at this policy. It was back on August 2019. So, just to give a little bit of history, and then I'm going to turn it over to Brian. Brian was, I can't remember, so I'll say promoted into his role as emergency manager. And as coming into the role as emergency manager, he saw right away that we needed to have a stronger infrastructure within our organization to respond to emergencies. The policy was also in need of updating. So, Brian updated the policy to introduce and implement a major training component in our organization two years ago. We're substantially behind in our NIMs ICS training in terms of our Benton County employees who could respond. So, thanks to Brian, in the summer of 2019, he led a huge charge to get all of our employees NIMs ICS trained, and I thank goodness for that. Thank you so, so much, Brian, for all of your efforts to get our organization trained in 2019, because as you all know, in March 2020, Brian and I were activated in the EOC as well as the majority of our organization. So, just in the nick of time. The final piece that I do want to know is that Brian completed the policy updates very early on, but what was really important to Policy Oversight Committee were the corresponding procedures that accompanied the policy. So, with regard to the policy, there are some very specific processes to complete the COOP, the Continuity of Operations Plan, as well as really specific processes to complete the FEMA and NIMs ICS training. So, Brian and his team took the time to put together some really detailed documentation with screenshots for the online system in order to help folks be compliant with the process as efficiently as possible. So, Brian, I'm happy to hand it over to you at this point.
Perfect. Thanks, Lilia. And one other greater context Lilia hit really well with, this was initiated by a much older policy that was adopted in 2005, which was the whole NIMs ICS process in general. So, the overview of this was, this was basically an update to solidify our NIMs ICS training as a requirement for county.
Brian, we lost you. Did you accidentally mute yourself maybe?
The other piece of that was our continuity of operations planning, which I know when I really input our grant funding, it is likely they will be very soon in the future, especially after this whole COVID piece and everything we've seen. These continuity of operations plans will really help each department.
Commissioners, I'm seeing a chat message from Sheriff Van Arstol that is saying that he was on his cell phone, lost the call.
Target areas that are going to be potentially of concern, or will need certain staff for real quick, cascade or flood.
Brian?
Yes.
You're, you're jumping in and out, the connection is, and I hate to say it, but we didn't hear most of what you were wanting to update the board with. So, if you could maybe start over back in the updating from 2005.
Yes, no problem. So, can you guys hear me clearly now?
Yeah, we can. Thank you.
Okay. So, basically, all I was saying was this is an update to a originally adopted 2005 policy, formally taking on the NIMs ICS process for all county employees. I mean, then the COOP piece of this or continuity of operations piece will help our county departments identify what areas are vital and can be shut down in each month or quarter or period of time, and then they can target, maneuver, and shift resources as needed across the organization. So, that is the general intent of this policy. Lilia already covered sort of the process through. It's gone out to staff review, bent the department heads multiple times, refined, and then we developed our procedures. What we plan on doing with this, once this is formally adopted, is offering at least quarterly sort of trainings or check-ins with departments, so that way they have a good interface with us to update their plan if they need guidance, et cetera, et cetera. We can also do a recording and make those available on the B, so folks who are assigned to update the plans have a step-by-step guide that we have filmed that can walk them through the process. So, we want to make this as accessible as possible to sort of go through and do. So, we want maximum compliance as we adopt this policy.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Lilia. Are there further questions for staff on this proposed policy?
I don't have any questions on the policy, but I really appreciate having Brian in this position and working to get policies and operations on the, on the same page. So, I appreciate this considerable effort, and if we're ready, I'll make a motion. Move to adopt policy A104, county response to major disasters as written.
Second.
Oh. So, sorry, I'm not sure how to fix, but that's a typo, it's A108, unfortunately. I don't know.
I'll, I'll start over. Although, I think in the actual documents, it says 104, I think.
Yes. Unfortunately, over the past two years, we have undertaken an update to our policy formatting. And so, when we initially started working around this draft of the policy, it, we actually had two policies that were labeled A104. The correction for this policy is A108, and so, when it is, when this version is adopted and posted onto the B and stored in our files, it will have the correct version of A108. So, I apologize for that inconsistency.
Greg, I'll start over. I move to adopt policy number A108, county response to major disasters as written.
Second. All in favor, please signify with an "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Aye. 108. Okay. We, thank you. We really appreciate this. It feels like housekeeping, except for we really need it, and it's critically important. So, Brian, Lilia, much appreciated, and all of the teams of folks that helped put this in place. So, moving on to item 8.2, in the matter of approving the 2020 annual reports for Coffin Butte Landfill and the Pacific Region of Compost, Republic Services, and Daniel Reddick from Community Development. Thank you. Welcome, Daniel.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Can everyone hear me okay? Excellent. Thank you. So, we have two different annual reports on the schedule today to review. The first one, Attachment 1, is for Coffin Butte Landfill Annual Report for 2020. The second annual report is the Republic Services Annual Report for the Collection Franchise, and that's Attachment Number 3. I just wanted to briefly review some of the key details from the reports, and if you have any questions, please let me know. I've put together a brief summary of, of the Coffin Butte Landfill Annual Report, which is Attachment 2. We're calling it the Coffin Butte Landfill Operational and Capacity Report, essentially a staff summary of these, of this information. So, I'll briefly go through it. information. So I'll briefly go through it. We're going to cover a few key areas. First, landfill capacity. The 2020 annual report reported 18.8 years to 21.85 years of landfill capacity, depending on the effective density of the materials and the disposal rate tonnage. The sources and tons of the waste, we saw a 17% decrease from 2019 to 2020 with the amount of tonnage going into the landfill. This year, it came out to 863,210 tons. For environmental impacts, this report includes a summary of what is called the Annual Environmental Monitoring Report that Coffin Butte Landfill does. This is typically included as an appendix in detail, but this year they included an appendix with the graphs and figures for that report. But the actual full, full-length Annual Environmental Monitoring Report is not included as an attachment here, but we're working on posting that to our website as well. But I just picked a few of some of the key findings in that summary that they provided. First, the natural background concentrations of arsenic exceeded drinking water standards at the compliance boundary for cells four and five. Manganese was the only indicator parameter above site-specific limits or SSLs for two wells on the east side, but there's no action required for that. The number and concentrations of volatile organic compounds or VOCs in compliance wells have declined over the long term. And VOC concentrations were below primary drinking water standards in the west side compliance wells, including levels of PCE, which at one well has continued in a downward trend. So there is a total of 25.6 million gallons of generated leachate for 2020. For air emissions and odors, there were four odor notifications which the landfill received and were documented to Oregon Department of Environmental Quality. These odor concerns also make it into a annual report that staff provides to the Disposal Site Advisory Committee, which highlights all of the different community member concerns throughout the year. This year, there were 10 total community member concerns around Coffin Butte Landfill, primarily the four odor notifications, as well as other concerns like roadside debris. Lastly, construction and demolition debris at Coffin Butte Landfill, there was a decrease for 2020. This year, Coffin Butte Landfill accepted about 10,279 tons of CND materials or construction demolition materials from Benton County sources, which makes up approximately 10% of all the materials coming from Benton County to the landfill. And I've provided some year-over-year analysis in the attached charts, so you can compare it to previous years. And so that is pretty much the summary for the Coffin Butte Landfill Annual Report and associated data. Is there any questions before I move on to the Republic Services Collection Franchise Annual Report?
Questions from Pat or Nancy or comments from Julie? Okay. Go ahead and move on, Daniel.
Okay. Thank you. So the second annual report is coming from Republic Services for their Collection Franchise in Benton County, and they cover a lot of different information in this report. But I picked out a few pieces of key details for you that I thought was especially relevant. First, the number of collection customers in this franchise were 6,283. That's residential, commercial, and industrial customers in Benton County. That represents an increase for the residential landfill or trash carts, as well as recycling customers from 2019 to 2020. There were decreases in customers for the number of residential mixed organics or the yard waste carts, as well as the commercial and industrial accounts between 2019 and 2020. There were, on the recycling, there were increases in scrap metal and yard waste recycling between 2019 and 2020. But there were decreases in all of the other recycling streams listed. The largest decrease we saw was with food waste recovery, which changed from 2019 to 2020 about a decrease of 44.3%. These changes were largely attributed to possible impacts from COVID-19 in the annual report. In 2020, the collection receipts totaled $3,651,566, with a paid franchise fee of $182,570. And yeah, those are the key details from the Republic Services Annual Report for the Collections Franchise. I don't know if Julie Jackson wanted to add anything that I may have missed.
Daniel, I think you hit the high points for me. The only thing that I would add at this point is just some new information that I think all of you are aware of. But with the Delta variant and with COVID cases on the rise again, we are once again sort of reminding our franchises that we came up with a plan when COVID first began as to how we would collect waste if we had a shortage of drivers due to COVID at that point we were talking about. And so as you might guess, the priority is to collect the trash first, and then yard debris and recycling last. And that just has to do with odor issues really coming from the material. We have not had to make those decisions, and I hope that we don't have to make those decisions, but I just want you to be aware of it. The second part of that is that we are now in the midst of a national shortage of drivers, of CDL drivers for all industries across the country, and the waste industry is feeling that as well. What we are doing is working hard to recruit. We've added some sign-on bonuses. We are working very hard to hire drivers. But a part of our process, and we don't feel like we can change that, is a safety program. So our drivers go through six weeks of safety training before they ever get behind the wheel by themselves. And so that process does take a little bit of time. And we just want you to be aware that for that reason also, we could end up having to prioritize waste streams. But we're not there, and we hope we don't get there. I just want to let you know proactively in case it should happen. And other than that, and if anyone has questions, I don't have anything to add.
Well, thank you. It's good to know that you have plans in place should there be a need to do that kind of triage. And I see in terms of the waste acceptance by county of origin, that actually the waste stream declined last year, and I think that you were stating that that might be correlated with COVID. But and then just the relative proportion of waste from different counties, it doesn't look like there's any one county that has shifted upwards too much, but it might Marion looks like it might be contributing a little bit more. Are there changes going on at the burn facility that led to that?
In 2020, they had some major repair work to be done at Covanta, and there was a longer period of time than we would normally expect for their maintenance. So waste from Marion County only comes two ways to Coffin Butte. It comes when there's a shutdown of any kind at the Covanta incinerator. And it also comes when the MRF, which is the Material Recovery Facility in Marion County, when the material that's left after they've sorted out the wood and the cardboard and the sheetrock and all of the things they can sort, the residual comes to Coffin Butte. But otherwise, just curbside trash and recycling would typically, or not recycling, but trash would typically go to Covanta. They did have some more downtime in 2020 than normal.
Thank you.
In terms of waste by county of origin, one of the other major changes that have happened between 2019 and 2020 is just the amount of waste coming out of Washington County. And between 2017 and 2019, Washington County had a much higher portion of the waste coming into Coffin Butte Landfill. While in 2020, that decreased substantially.
And that was a deal that was brokered about four years ago, I suppose, when the Riverbend Landfill basically closed and that waste needed to go someplace. That was now being shipped, I believe, down the gorge to a facility owned by Waste Connection by Ram. And so that was a short-term situation that's happened.
Thank you. And the metro waste, it looks like it increased a little bit, but is that also mostly kind of only a backup for them?
Yes. We are not a primary facility for the metro region. One thing that might be interesting for you to keep in mind as you look at waste coming in, when we look at the 2020, 2021 numbers a year from now, you are going to see a really large anomaly, and that is fire debris. So Coffin Butte is the regional facility for the fire debris primarily that came out of the North Santium Canyon. And I don't know if you know the total number of tons, but it was a substantial amount of waste that came from that fire debris. And let's hope that we don't have that anomaly again anytime soon.
That makes long-term planning pretty challenging.
Yes.
Now, okay. And with respect to the CND waste, what is your thought about that? Do you think that there's just more recycling going on and so that not as much of it is hitting the landfill?
You know, that one's a really hard one to document. And I don't have an answer to that. I can tell you, just to kind of keep on your radar screen, that the MRF, Material Recovery Facility in Marion County has just completed a multimillion-dollar state-of-the-art facility. And we are going to be taking the Solid Waste Agency up to view that facility because it's something that could be available to Benton County as well, and a way to get more usable material recovered out of that CND stream.
Excellent. Thank you. Pat?
Yeah, you mentioned the Covanta incinerator. Why, I'm going from memory, but that's a relatively old installation. Is there concern that it's towards the end of its useful life? Or what is the, what is the plan on that facility?
You're right. It is one of the older facilities around the country, and it needs, I believe it needs some substantial upgrades. That's a contract that Marion County is working through, and they signed a short-term contract. There's a lot going on that I'm not privy to, but you're right, it is an older facility. It is going to need more upgrades. But I don't think that Coffin Butte is Marion County's long-term solution for that.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Well, if anything changes on that front, it's very useful to know that as well.
I believe they signed a three-year contract, Marion County, with Covanta. And so substantially nothing should change in that period of time. And then we'll see. I think Marion County's looking at other options.
Thank you. Are there other questions for Julie and Daniel? Okay. I have just one. How do you, or do you have any sense for how the new state recycling law is going to shift things? And at what point we will start to see that change here locally?
That's also a hard one to answer, but we're going to be working through that in the next couple of years. 2025 is, I believe, when the law actually goes into effect. The one thing that I can tell you that is an absolute part of that law is extended producer responsibility. So that means that producers of these materials are going to have a hand in the, I think, the process and the cost of recycling those materials at end of life. And Oregon and I believe Michigan were the first two to sign these type bills into law. And so we will see how that plays out and how that affects the waste stream. But it is something that's a long time coming. I think it will completely overhaul the recycling system in Oregon. And what that looks like for us, we don't know yet. But I think my strong feeling after really following this week after week with many, many, many meetings with DEQ and a steering committee set up by DEQ is that it will have a very positive impact. I think it's a really good thing. It's just that we, you know, we're also setting our ways and we're going to have to get used to some new ways to do things. But we can do it.
Yep. Okay, that sounds good. So in the near term, it won't change any of the Collection franchises, but it certainly will unless we hit 2025?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments from Daniel?
No other comments from me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We typically accept these reports. I would be happy to accept a motion.
I'll move to accept the 2020 Republic Services Annual Report and the 2020 Coffin Butte and Pacific Region Compost Annual Report.
Second?
All in favor, please signify with an I.
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 I. Thank you very much. And good to see you both.
Thank you.
Okay. I have one late arriving little bit of business that I would like to tuck into other. And you each have had a chance to take a look at your email. I received a message from Eric Nieman about a proposal to add an historical marker for the cemetery in Paloma, the Shipley Cemetery. And they would like a letter of support. And I'm not sure if you're familiar with this, the Mountain Union Cemetery, that was created by Ruben and Mary Jane Shipley, and was the first black cemetery. And there is a movement here locally to add a significant historical marker there. Would you be supportive of me offering a letter of support on behalf of the Board of Commissioners?
I would definitely support that.
Sounds good.
Okay. We'll put that together. Joe, would you prefer that we have a formal motion?
Yes, I would prefer that.
I'll move to the Board of Commissioners to write a letter of support for the naming of Mountain Union Cemetery.
Or for the historical marker at?
Marker.
I will second that.
Okay. All in favor, please signify with an I.
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 Hi. And Erica, I will send you this email. And so you have it for the record? And so you have it for the record.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. With that, and if there's any other business that is in the order, we are adjourned.